Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight and the chance to honor and celebrate all of you. We're very much looking forward to this. This is a new approach that we're taking in the district to try to really create a more formal way to recognize outstanding accomplishments that are going on in our district, both from our students and our staff. And so it's exciting to be here tonight. This is our first effort at this. We're gonna learn and grow and get better, but we're gonna celebrate tonight, and we're excited to do that with you. Our Board of Education is here this evening to help in that celebration. And are you getting a vibrating sound back there, or is it just me?
Yeah.
Connor, maybe you could just shut it off, because I think I can talk loud enough. It's better? Okay. First off, introduce our board. President Wendy Cheatham is out of town and sends her regrets that she had to do something with her family this week and has gone and could not make it. Our vice president of the board, Mr. Grant Lidle.
(applause).
We are expecting our treasurer, Mr. Rebecca Powers, who, or our secretary, excuse me, who will be here just a little bit, hopefully later, and she'll be here. Mr. Willie Cowherd, one of our members of our board.[91.32][91.32](applause). Mr. Brent Lees.[95.89][95.89](applause). Ms. Lisa Clark.[100.72][100.72](applause). And then Mr. Matt Burgess.[104.72][104.72](applause). We're gonna get help tonight from them, but we'll also get help from Mary Lay, who is our Public Relations Director. And then our principals will also be participating in and out throughout the evening, as well as our athletic director. When we first started to think about this and put this together, one of the advantages that we saw in this was that, you know, we could devote time that wouldn't be rushed and that we would actually all be able to kind of sit together. And our target is to be out of here in less than an hour. I mean, and we want you to stay during that time, because we're hoping that as you hear the different things that are going on within the school district, that it will kind of carry you on to say, "Boy, what a fantastic district we have," and it will also get you excited about people that are in this district that are really doing exceptional things. I actually feel like it's gonna be a motivational thing for each and every one of us this evening as we get to hear about some pretty wonderful things that are going on in every arena that we have, whether it's in the academic arena, or whether it's in our extracurricular activities, or whether it's in what we deliver day to day with our teaching. So I don't want to waste any more time. I want to jump into recognition this evening. And first, I'll ask Mr. Scott Passmore to join us onstage, who will introduce our coaches this evening, who will be then recognizing some of our athletes. Right along with that, I'll have the Board of Education come up here onto the stage right now. You will help in passing out and greeting the student-athletes as they come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Poor. I have the honor of introducing three state championship teams this year, and this is just the fall season. So we're real excited about this group and real excited about what's gonna happen through the winter sports and the spring. So I'd like to go ahead and ask the dance team and Coach Adkins to come on up to the front, please.[219.12][219.12](applause). And I'm gonna turn this over to Coach Adkins in just a second, but I do want to say, these girls spend a tremendous amount of time in the gym. I mean, the hours that they spend on their routines is unbelievable. I had the pleasure of watching them perform a few times this year, and I will say this, the competition was not even close. We dominated the state of Arkansas. And for you fans that showed up for the Springdale Harbor competition, that's where State was hosted, we took over that gym. As I sat in the stands and looked at our fan base and the support they had, it made me so proud to be a Bentonville Tiger. And at this time, I'm gonna turn this over to Coach Adkins and let her introduce her team and say a few things.
Okay, these are the Golden Tamers, and our team consists of 14 varsity dancers and four junior varsity dancers, our competition team. And I could not be more proud of this group of girls. They are so talented, but also so extremely dedicated and hardworking. And our goal this year was to win State, and we did it. And now we're going to Nationals on Friday in Orlando, so that's another huge accomplishment for this team. So first, we have Madison Simpson.[313.02][313.02](applause).
Coach, please stop it.
Yes.
Are you doing it in your order, or can we go in our order?
Yes. Would you like me to go in alphabetical order?
Yeah, and then we will be a little more efficient.
Okay. Yes, that would be great.[334.31][334.31](laughing).
I'll take blame for that, because I told her it wasn't alphabetical order. My bad.
That's okay. Olivia Cameron.[343.13][343.13](applause). Katherine Howell.[371.00][371.00](applause). Allison Kleese.[377.00][377.00](applause). Cameron Kaiser.[383.00][383.00](applause). Jenna McCollum.[388.00][388.00](applause). Sidney Phillips.[401.00][401.00](applause). Abby Price.[407.00][407.00](applause). This is very hard dancer, Abby.[413.00][413.00](laughing). Ashley Sharp.[415.00][415.00](applause). Madison Simpson.[421.00][421.00](applause). Sarah Steiner.[434.00][434.00](applause). Haley Stutzman.[440.00][440.00](applause). Alexa Tassani.[446.00][446.00](applause). And Lauren Woodhouse.
Coach, how much money did they raise to go to?
Almost $19,000. And that's it.
I do want to say, with their state championship and then going on to Nationals, this group was so, they were so committed to attending the national event that they raised over $19,000 in fundraising so they could be able to attend Nationals in Orlando. So congratulations to that as well.[480.47][480.47](applause).
Passmore, when is Nationals? Can you share that?
Yeah, I'll let Coach Adkins say. Fly out Thursday. Go ahead, Coach.
Friday. We're leaving on Friday, and we're coming back on Tuesday, and there will be hundreds of teams there.
So we'll send good thoughts to these ladies, and let's give them all one more big hand collectively.
Thank you.[502.56][502.56](applause).
Thank you, ladies. Nice job. Good job.
Okay, as they're leaving the stage, the next group we want to bring up will be our state championship football team. Now, guys, we're gonna do something a little bit different, because I don't think the stage will handle all of you. So we're gonna have you guys stand down in the front, right down here in the front, in front of the stage, and then we're gonna bring Coach Lunny up to talk to the audience about your performance this year. So if I go ahead and bring the football team up to the front, thank you.[538.82][538.82](applause). Okay, as this group's making way to the stage, you know, obviously, it's a great achievement to win a state championship, and, you know, one thing I'll say about them is that we didn't back down from anything with football this year. This group played probably the, in no doubt, the toughest schedule in the state of Arkansas with the talent we brought in, especially in the preseason. And, you know, I just thoroughly enjoy going out every Friday night and watching them compete. And, you know, we were afraid we weren't gonna get that state championship game in. If you guys remember, the weather was so bad, and they had to postpone it the week, and then we went down and played in 38 degrees weather with blowing rain, and I just commend them for that effort as well. And then to bring home the state title and bring that back to Bentonville was a great accomplishment. So I'll turn it over right now to Coach Lunny. Thank you.[614.29][614.29](applause).
Well, there's not a whole lot to add to that, other than certainly, we're very proud of our, these young men and some others that couldn't be here tonight. And we, you know, as Scott said, Mr. Passmore said, we started off the year a little bit rough, had a very demanding non-conference schedule, and I think it paid off. It was a season win. I think it helped prepare us for the rest of our conference, which is year in, year out, is one of the toughest, and not only the state of Arkansas, but this region. But it was a lot of fun to watch the character development of this football team, the personality of the team take place. Each year, it's a different group, different personalities and mix, and watching them blend together, and then making the run. Glad you could make it, Javier.[668.69][668.69](laughing) And to make that run, very challenging year.[676.48][676.48](laughing). They're a wonderful group of guys. We, as coaches, we couldn't have asked for a better group of men that continue to work and get better. And that's, in any, in a case of any success and athletic endeavor, it's always about continuing to get better through the year. And I think that's the thing that was a trademark of this football team, that each week, we continue to get better, make improvement until Little Rock, and we played absolutely wonderful game in some terrible conditions. This senior class won 35 games in three years. They were three conference champions, three years in a row, conference champions. That makes our seventh year in a row to win the conference champion. They were state champions with two runners-up, and when you sit down and look at the totality of the body of work this group, especially this senior class, you'd be hard-pressed anywhere, not only in the state of Arkansas, but regionally and nationally, to find a better group of young men. We're extremely proud of that, and their work habits and their work ethic, and a lot of ours, as most of you know, that have children that are involved in extracurricular activities. It takes a lot of work, and especially when you don't have, they don't have driver's license yet, and you're having to drive them, drop them off, and come and pick them up. And I do want to say one other thing before we go, and we have great support in this community. It's been really a blessing to be able to be the coach here and to watch this every Friday night at our place and every other event that we have. Jam-packed stadium, it's been a special place for us, and it doesn't just happen. I get an opportunity to speak at clinics around the state and the nation over the years, and one of the things that I always talk about when people ask me about having a successful program, certainly it takes quality young men like these to be able to work with, number one, have a great staff that we've been blessed to hire here, guys who care about kids, who love kids first, and then have an administration. And Athletic Director, Mr. Passmore, has just been facilitating us to be able to have an opportunity to succeed, you know? And that's one thing as a coach you look to, to be able to have administration. Dr. Scott across the street, the high school guys who understand, you know, what it takes to be able to have a chance to put a good product on the field, in our case. And certainly, last but not least, is having a superintendent that really understands, and I really mean this, understands that academics and athletics can mix, and you can have a great balance. And that's something I know that he has really worked hard at and wants to have in this district, and I think that's what makes this district special, is having a superintendent of schools who really understands the importance that extracurricular activities, and I'll speak to athletic side of it, really plays in the total development of our young people in this district. And I think that's what sets us apart. And so it's not a one-person thing, it's all-the-people thing, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be the coach here. Thank you all.[861.23][861.23](applause).
Before you guys leave, can I hold you up just for a second? And I should've done this, and I'll come back to the, our dance team. But parents of football players, would you please stand?[873.01][873.01](applause). Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here tonight and supporting the program. And then seniors, would you just raise your hand to give everybody an idea of how many seniors were a part of this team?[891.13][891.13](applause). And certainly, seniors, you guys make the culture of the team, which of course sets up the challenge for juniors. But seniors, we thank you for what you did. And our coaching staff, if they would all raise their hand, because some of those guys, it's probably hard to see who they are.[908.82][908.82](applause). And I would be remiss if I didn't say that we have a coach that resigned at Christmas, Coach Rachel, and many of you, as players, would know and love him, but as parents too. So hopefully, if you see him in the community, you'll be able to honor him in some way in the near future. We thank Coach Lunny for being here tonight, and all of you as football players, and thank you so much for a wonderful season.[933.01][933.01](applause).
And we do have certificates for you guys. Coach Lunny's gonna pick them up. We just didn't know how long it'd take to go through all your names, so we appreciate you here. But you do have a certificate, all right? Coach will get those out to you right now. Thanks again.[950.01][950.01](applause). Okay, the next group we'll bring to stage is our state...
Can I just interrupt you? I gotta follow up one more thing with the cheerleaders, or, excuse me, our dance team. Parents of the dance team, would you all please stand?[965.01][965.01](applause). And then I have two other announcements, real quick, Mr. Passmore. As can happen with your bosses, they have already shared two things to me that they needed to make sure I got out. One, I misspoke with Coach Rachel. I said that he resigned. He retired, okay? And so we want to share that. And then Mr. Cowherd had to butt in and say, "He only won 11 football games his whole career in Bentonville." So, guys, congratulations, and now I'll turn it back to Mr. Passmore.
And I apologize. I thought we were trying to get out of here by 7 o'clock, so I was trying to speed this thing along. Sorry about that.[1006.69][1006.69](laughing). Okay, the next group we're gonna bring up is our state boys tennis champions.[1012.82][1012.82](applause). And again, as these guys are making way to the stage, another group that I was able to attend several of their events, very impressive program. Every year, with our tennis program, we're competing right there for a state championship. And when people see they're getting ready to go up head-to-head with our doubles or our singles kids, I promise it's not something they look forward to, because they know there's a huge challenge ahead of them. And it's kind of one of these programs, we just feel like every year, we're reloading and ready to compete again for another state championship. I've got Coach Abby Sharp and Coach Clint Alexander up here that's going to speak a little bit, and I'll turn it over to Coach Alexander at this time.
Thanks a lot, guys, for coming out tonight. This is our 2013-2014 Boys State Tennis Championship Team. Well done, you guys. Way to go.[1083.48][1083.48](applause). This is just my second year being a part of the tennis team, and I've loved it. Wanted to recognize Coach Nick Narcissian, who's not here tonight. He's our head coach. He had a swim commitment tonight. Surprising, I know. But I just wanted to recognize him as well. Let me, let me just read off the names of our state champions here. I want to recognize the seniors, maybe just say a little bit about some of these guys. Shriker Chikola.[1113.01][1113.01](laughing). Ish. Not here. Keegan Cronister.[1119.51][1119.51](applause). I know another gentleman isn't here tonight, Dylan DeLuca. Wanted to recognize Dylan. He was a senior this year. This is the four-time, four in a row, right, Michael? Four-time state tennis championship team here. Dylan was a part of all four of those. Dylan led by example. He was a great kid and a great student, and this year, he was also the state of Arkansas Boys Singles Champion. So I wanted to recognize him, even though he's not here tonight.[1155.73][1155.73](applause). Billy Gerards. Where he at, Billy? There he is. Ryan Hargrove.[1166.16][1166.16](applause). Reed Hohen.[1170.83][1170.83](applause). Patrick Keith.[1176.83][1176.83](applause). Travis McCluskey. Travis is also, Travis is also a senior. Listen, being a part of teams, as I have been, Travis is the kind of teammate you want on your team. He came and worked hard every, eh, I'm not lying, he is.[1198.33][1198.33](laughing) So I'll embarrass him a little bit. Came and worked hard, great attitude, great kid, all the time. Andrew Miller.[1206.73][1206.73](applause). Michael is also a senior. He has been a part of three, four, four, thank you, Michael. He's been a part of two state championships. Last year was in our final match of the year and won the doubles final to win, so that was kind of, kind of the biggest match at the end of last year. And Michael is definitely probably our vocal leader. He's kind of the fire, the spark plug. He's been a huge part of what's happened for the tennis team. Nice job, Michael.[1251.33][1251.33](applause). Rahul Nair. Rahul Nair, he's also a senior.[1257.33][1257.33](applause). He's also a lot smarter than me. Interestingly enough, I think it was against Springdale or Heritage, I can't remember. There was a match this year where he was playing against two other guys, Hispanic gentlemen from their team, and they were talking in Spanish, and he decided he would join them in the middle of the match. They weren't expecting that.[1277.26][1277.26](laughing) Jack Neal.[1280.01][1280.01](applause). Christian Sylvester.[1286.01][1286.01](applause). Doug Terry.[1291.33][1291.33](applause). And his older brother, Robert Terry.[1297.16][1297.16](applause). Really, really proud of the work they've put in this year. These guys play, obviously, starting in the summer through the middle of October, but they're really hitting balls and playing hard all year long. Well done, you guys. You deserve it.[1314.01][1314.01](applause).
The parents of the tennis team, if you'd all please stand, so we can appreciate you as well.[1323.95][1323.95](applause). And gentlemen, we appreciate your efforts this year in bringing home another title for us, and we'll let you sit down, and applause as they, as they leave the stage. Thank you, gentlemen.[1340.13][1340.13](applause). Our next one, we actually get to honor teachers. And so principals, if you would please come up and join our board members, if you're, if you have someone that is a nationally board-certified, so any of our principals that are here to help recognize and celebrate these individuals. This is one of the highest distinctions that a teacher can get, and it comes with a tremendous amount of work. And I thought that there probably is no better way to exemplify what these teachers went through than to have Mary Lay share that. Mary is a nationally board-certified teacher herself, and has accomplished the exact things that she's gonna be sharing about the individuals that we will be bringing forth onto the stage in just a few minutes. So Mary, please share what this all entails.
I really appreciate getting a chance to celebrate you. All your principals wanted to, too, and I guess I got to draw the lucky straw, because don't ever think that we don't think you're the greatest and superstars in the world. I was working on my national board in Florida, and halfway through the year and halfway through the process, my husband found out that he ran an Olympic training center there, that he was gonna be moved to Colorado. So we sold our house in three days, and I ended up living in the house where all the triathletes, with three Czechoslovakian triathletes and two 25-year-old girl triathletes, and to try to study was a pretty amazing feat. And the worst thing is, when I go run with a Czechoslovakian triathlete, the only thing they could say is, "Welcome to Orlando." So it was a really trying time to figure it out, and even though we're, you know, the state championship athletes, that's what it's like getting to be a national board-certified teacher. It's that big of a deal. And I've done some many neat things in my life, and even some many pretty neat athletic events, from the Boston Marathon to the Ironman in Hawaii. And when I found out I passed the national board, I thought it beat all of those. I thought it was even more of a significant thing than any of the other things I had ever done. And so I remember, I don't know what you guys felt like, but the day you hit the button to see if you passed or if you didn't pass was probably the most stressful moment of my life. You wait six months to find out if you passed, and it's just a click with the finger, and you knew you were gonna have the greatest day in your life or the worst day in your life. And my finger just trembled, and when it said pass, I think I almost passed out, because it was that stressful. But so you guys and everybody here, so thank you so much for everybody coming tonight. This means so much to us. But as much as I'm glad we're honoring you tonight, you really deserve a whole banquet. And don't ever think for a minute that this district doesn't value how great you are and the sacrifice you've made to get this. But the five core propositions that you must meet is, teachers are committed to students and their learning. Teachers know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects to students. Teachers are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning. Teachers think systematically about their practice and learn from experience. Teachers are members of learning communities. But it's more than that. There's standards. NBCTs are dedicated to making knowledge accessible to all students. They believe all students can learn. They treat students equitably. They recognize the individual difference that distinguish their students from one another, and they take account for these differences in their practice. NBCTs understand how students develop and learn. They respect the culture and family difference students bring to their classroom. They are concerned with their students' self-concept, their motivation, and effects of learning on peer relationships. NBCTs are also concerned with the development of character and civic responsibility. And even though I read that every teacher should feel that way, it's not that easy. But these teachers have proved that they do that every day in their classroom. And in order to even qualify to be in, to go through this program, you have to be a great teacher. But now they're the greatest teachers. So please, as, let's just applause before we even announce who each one of them is.[1608.76][1608.76](applause). I also want to honor all their co-teachers, because it takes a team to get the job done. I want to honor their families, because they have to be unselfish with you go through this process. And I want to celebrate all their principals that encouraged and made other things possible. There's a lot of filming involved, a lot of data involved, and it definitely takes a team effort to accomplish this. So we are ready to announce them. And so from Central Park Elementary School, Stephanie Blacker, Stephanie Blacker. Let's celebrate Stephanie.[1650.33][1650.33](applause).
You have quite the gossip to go.
We need a little "We are the Champions" music here.[1668.26][1668.26](laughter).
Thank you. Thank you.
And as she's getting her certificate from Brightfield Middle School, let's honor Kristy Foster.[1680.13][1680.13](applause). This is better than coming down for the Price is Right.[1692.76][1692.76](laughing) Great job. And I've got the privilege to meet this young, this high school teacher a year or two ago, and was amazed by him. He helped us on a book project, and the respect students give him and the school gives him. And I just can't say enough about Bentonville High School, John McElroy.[1714.41][1714.41](applause). And along with John is his teammate from Bentonville High School, Mary Jo Thixton.[1729.41][1729.41](applause). If you see Mary Jo, tell her how proud we all are of her. And from Cooper Elementary School, let's welcome Diane Sinisky.[1743.13][1743.13](applause). Way to go, Diane, and her teammate from Cooper Elementary School, Jennifer Toms.[1758.83][1758.83](applause). And more students are fortunate to have Centerton Gamble Elementary School, Charlene Codell.[1774.91][1774.91](applause). And let's all be thankful and grateful for Tina James from Fulbright Junior High School.[1792.83][1792.83](applause). And I saw the words that Mr. Guthrie wrote for his teachers on their behalf tonight, and he's very touched, very grateful to have his teammate Tara Nutt as his national board certified teacher, along with another one from Lincoln Junior High School, Andrea Thompson. Please welcome them up on stage. And how fortunate are we to have our youngest school, a primary school, Tenney Russell, primary school to have a teacher of this quality called, I mean, called, sorry, named Amanda Guthright. And even though she's absent tonight, when we see her shopping or in school or working with our children, let's thank Washington Junior High School, Holly Alisa. And also, Washington Junior High School, Deanna Wallace. Let's welcome her up on stage. Can we please give a standing ovation for our national board certified teachers? Way to go, Connor. Thank you.
We had "We Are The Champions" for our teachers. Students, if you had one of these teachers somewhere in your academic career, whether elementary, middle school, junior high, or high school, would you wave your hand a little bit? It just gives you a sense of how you've impacted teachers, these kids, because they're coming up and getting awards as well. Pretty neat deal. Next, I'd like to have Mr. Scott stay with me. We have an award that is, I believe, new to us this year, and one that we had not previously had an award winner for. This is a state contest, and it was for the National Garden Competition, where students had to write an essay. And we had two students that did extremely well in this competition. First off, I would like to bring forward the individual that took second place in this competition, and that was Tasia Makapati. And Tasia, would you please join us? And the individual that actually won the state competition this year and took first place was Winona Gebide. And Winona, I believe, is headed towards nationals for her essay. I'm gonna put both of these ladies on the spot real quick. Tasia, can you please tell me what you wrote about?
Oh, I wrote about toxicity in the ground and heavy metals.
Toxicity and heavy metals in the ground, okay? And Winona, could you please share what your essay was about?
I wrote about this project that we can all do, that encourages people to publish things that they do to better the environment and like get out prizes and things to these people, to encourage more people to get involved in bettering the environment.
Winona, where do you get to head next?
To the regional level.
And where will that be held at? Don't know yet? Okay. And the parents of these two students, would you please stand? We appreciate it. And ladies, thank you for honoring us with your excellence. We appreciate it. Next, I'll ask Mr. Young, I don't know if he's still here, to join me on the stage. Mr. Young, why don't you just come right up here? And we had a special celebration. It wouldn't be right if I didn't allow Mr. Young to say a few words, if you would, behind the podium, about this individual. Kind of a rare honor, a rare treat, to have a teacher at the elementary level being selected for the Outstanding History Teacher of the Year for the State of Arkansas. Mr. Young, would you share more?
Absolutely. Well, we're talking about state championships tonight, and those are great, but those are only 7A state championships. This is from 1A, from teams that don't even have football, all the way up to 7A out of thousands of teachers. Mainly, as Mr. Poor said, usually you think of history, you think of high school. But in our case at Cooper Elementary, we're blessed with someone that a third grader came home talking about social studies at dinner. That's not normal third grade conversation. That's why we are proud to have the Arkansas History Teacher of the Year out of thousands of teachers, Ms. Chrissy Hallwax.
Matt, would you come over, so we get a picture? Oops, maybe not. Kristy, come on forward. We're gonna get a picture with you and Matt and I, so we can get you through here. Can we get a picture real fast?
Oh, no.
I'm gonna back you up. Thank you. And it was a wonderful ceremony that we got to have at Cooper Elementary several weeks ago with the state coming up. And imagine 700 students celebrating Ms. Hallwax, and they, boy, did they. They were loud and proud. And so, and so are we, to have you as our Arkansas State Teacher of the Year. Thank you. Next, and Ms. Lay may be able to help me out on this one, because it deals with an art project that occurred, and there's a wonderful teacher that's behind this effort. But there's also a principal that we'd like to have come up to support this award, from Washington, Mr. Sparassino, if you'd join me. And I'd also like to introduce a student that was selected by the Economics Arkansas Council to have be on the calendar for this wonderful thing that goes out to the entire state. First time, I think, in quite a while that we'd had a student on the calendar. And we were getting some pressure from some folks that are a part of Economics Arkansas. The Walton Foundation is a big part of this. Mr. Walton kept wondering, "When are we gonna have somebody?" Well, we did. And I think that Mary can probably best describe why we have a teacher that's so supportive of this program.
Jarris Palmer, I'd like to introduce you. She's probably, I think, one of the greatest art teachers I ever met in my life. Last couple of years ago, last year, she had, there were 32 scholastic awards in the State of Arkansas, and 30 of them went for her class. So, every time I need anything done, I go to all art teachers, but I always know that Jarris is just going to have something that wins her... Not that, I think all art teachers are great, but she just goes and goes and beyond, and we have a lot of winners. So, even this year, they won at the banner for downtown city planning, was one of Jarris' students, too. So, Jarris has our kids out there, and they're noticed. And we're an art community with the Walton Art Center coming soon, and now Crystal Bridges. And we're so lucky and so blessed to have an educator that has these students prepared for a future in this arts community. So, hands off to Jarris there.
Thank you, Jarris. Is Ella here this evening? There she is. Ella, we need you up here. You're missing from the party. You're the only one. We need you. You're the most important. As Ella comes forward, would her parents please stand? We'd like to thank you for having Ella be a part of our school district. And you probably already have a few of those calendars, but we'll give you another one. And let's give Ella one more round of applause. Thank you so much, Ella. This past week, Ms. Lay and I got to attend the mayor's recognition ceremony, and we got to recognize a young lady that's really, truly outstanding, and she has pretty wonderful parents as well. Would Carolyn Fox please join us right now? And Mr. Scott, Chad Scott. Dr. Scott, I don't know if you have any words that you want to share about Carolyn herself, but one of the things that I will share about her recognition, first off, it's, she is a part of a family that has, she has a twin brother. And twin brother is going to Ole Miss, which is really great, but we get to keep her at the University of Arkansas. And so, we're excited about that. Ms. Fox was recognized for doing a variety. I mean, it's virtually impossible to share all of the different things that she's done to be a part of this community and give back, to give towards something and towards folks that need different types of support. Dr. Scott, anything to Ella's staff?
She's just a wonderful student, very involved, and it's just, she just is one of those, one of those types of students that you look at, and you say she's a difference maker. She's a difference maker in the school, to other students, and to the staff. So, she's a pleasure to have at BHS.
And I don't know if Mr. or Mrs. Fox are here, but if they are, would you please stand? There he is. Thank you both, and congratulations. Yes. Our final one, and this came in near the, just recently, in the last month. And we'd like Coach Rainmaker to join us, please. And then we have Dr. Scott. And our cross-country team, obviously, is an outstanding team, year in, year out, and achieves wonderful things. But we also had an athlete this year. Coach, would you mind sharing just a few words about what this individual has done?
We found out probably about three weeks ago that Jacob Shihira was a recipient of this year's Gatorade Runner of the Year for Arkansas in the male division. This is his second year of doing this. To be nominated for this award, there are three areas involved with it. Now, one would be community service or character, and then academics, and of course, then his ability to run. And when you're a 4.2 grade point average for a student, and you get yourself involved in the community, and you can run close to 15 minutes in the 5K, all those criteria are pretty much met. A wonderful child, a great student, a person who has his head on straight, knows where he's going with life, spends many hours in all aspects of life, whether it be running or academics. His season, he broke the state record for high school in the State of Arkansas in the state meets. Unfortunately, someone else beat him at the same time, so he ended up getting second. But he turned the tables around on the child in the next couple of meets. His big meet this year, of course, probably would be the fact that he won the Nike South Regional Meet, which has never been done by an Arkansas runner at all. Ran very, very well. That, of course, got him to Portland in another national meet, where he was about 60 places better than he was the year before. So, a tremendous athlete, a great student, and deserves a lot of recognition, so.
Jacob, would you please join us? Coach, would you join us? I'll take a picture here with him. And if I understand it right, Jacob is just a junior, right?
He is.
So, that's even more exciting.
Yes, he promises to break 15 next year.
Thank you. And Jacob, I don't know if your parents are here, but we'd also like them to stand if they're in the audience. As we wrap up this evening, first, we want to thank everyone for taking time to be out here on this cold night. The board and I are excited about what you do day in and day out. We know that these type of accomplishments don't just happen on a given Saturday, or a given Friday, or over the course of even a semester. They're a dedication and a commitment that you made as an individual, as an athlete, as a teacher, as a coach. It's a dedication that you've made because you have a passion, I believe, and an intensity, a level of intelligence, a huge commitment that you've put forth, day in, day out, that's probably been in place for years and years and years. I know, I speak for the board to say that we're in awe of what you've done this year and in previous years, because we know there's a whole bunch of things that have gone on just to get us to a stage where you're recognized as state champions, or Arkansas Teacher of the Year, or a national board certified teacher. You are one of the reasons that this is a great district. We thank you, and we honor you, and we hope that you enjoyed this evening as much as we did. And we wish everyone well for the rest of this week, and that you get home and get warm as quick as possible. Have a great rest of your evening. Thank you.